Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 16th, City Council Workshop and City Council Meeting. And with that, we're going to go right into our workshop. So if we could get whoever's going to be brought in. And Counselor Ray will be joining us shortly.
And Mayor, I will just do a brief introduction of as they're coming in. We have Amy Goodwin and Molly McGill from Warp and Weft Branding that will do the presentation tonight. And just again, a quick recap in 2019, the city contracted with Warp and Weft to become the city's marketing consultant. In October of 2019, they actually began the process and the project of embarking on the process of developing a new logo and messaging, key messaging for the city. And tonight, again, we have Amy Goodwin and Molly McGill from Warp and Weft Branding that will walk us through that presentation. So with that, Amy and Molly, take us away.
Thanks, Dennis. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. We're excited to help you launch your new brand publicly. And welcome the opportunity to show you the work that we've been doing and have completed during this process. So tonight, we have a 30 to 40 minute presentation prepared. We'll talk about the process, the visual and verbal brand we're proposing, and the next steps that we recommend undertaking after this is done. If you have any questions for us during the presentation, please feel free to jump in. We're happy to take questions as we go. And Molly is going to get us started this evening by doing a recap of the research that we conducted in the early stages of the rebrands.
So, good evening, councilors, and thank you for having us here tonight. We are, as Amy said, proud to present the brand identity of Lewiston for you and your approval this evening. As you know, the city of Lewiston's brand was not created in a vacuum. It was developed through a community-wide process that included a cross-section of Lewiston residents, businesses, community leaders, city officials, and staff, as well as valuable outside perspectives. Warp and Weft held 21 focus groups, some with up to 20 people in attendance. Many of these were open to the general public. We also held countless one-on-one interviews, conversations, phone calls, and emails with historians, business owners, members of the public, and interested individuals. Amy, are you able to share your screen?
Oh, my goodness, I did not share my screen.
It's much more interesting with the visual.
It is much more interesting when there's visual. I am so sorry. Here we go. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
So to recap, that's the numbers for you in blatant sight. Again, 21 focus groups, a lot of people, countless one-on-one interviews, conversations, many of those with all of you. Surveys generated roughly 14,000 answers to 33 average questions. A lot of data. Part of this process, if you recall, was to develop target audience personas. So as a reminder, audience personas are semi-fictional, generalized representations of your identified target audience. Each of these personas is based on market research, as well as behavioral data and knowledge gleaned from the many focus groups and all the survey participants we talked to and the answers they provided. The purpose of audience personas is to define and understand your audience. Who the city of Lewiston's brand is talking to? These personas describe who your ideal target is, what their days are like, how they make decisions, the challenges they face, and how Lewiston can solve those challenges. So this is in much more detail in the brand strategy document we presented to you in the first presentation. However, I'm going to just jump over these, give a brief synopsis of who they are and the problem that Lewiston can solve for them. First up, we have Zara. Zara moved to Maine with her family when she was young, and Lewiston is her home. She lives with her husband and small children, but racial tension and housing safety make moving away a possibility. Jen is a single mother of three young children who recently moved to Lewiston. She works multiple jobs while pursuing an online degree and feels like she is just barely scraping by. Danielle is a Lewiston lifer, downtown business owner, arts and culture enthusiast, and a champion of all things Lewiston. He's also concerned about the perceived safety of the city. Andrea is newly graduated and decided to stay in Lewiston. She wants to start her own business, and she's deciding if Lewiston is the best place for her to set up shop. Kyle is a mainer. He's a lifer. He's from outside Lewiston, and he has a preconceived negative perception about the city. But he's getting priced out of where he currently lives and works, and moving to Lewiston is becoming a possibility. As we move forward with the development of brand identity, which includes the visual that Amy is going to present next, and later, the verbal brand, which I'll talk about after, these personas are at the forefront of our efforts. We are constantly checking in to make sure we are relevant and resonating in their hearts and minds. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Amy for the visual.
Okay, so once we've completed our research, everything that Molly has just talked about, and we've identified your target markets, that's when we begin to dive into the creation of the visual brand. For me, that's the fun stuff. Everything we've learned to date influences the selections we make, colors, imagery, fonts, stylistic representation. During this process, we are mindful about wanting to honor the history of the city while also intentionally looking to the future. So the brand that we're presenting to you tonight has gone through a myriad number of revisions, been vetted with decision-makers within the city, and is what we believe will help propel Lewiston forward. So before I show you the brand, I want to call your attention to the original city seal, which you see on the shared screen in the lower right-hand corner. I realize it's probably quite small, but hopefully you can see it. The imagery within the seal plays homage to the mills, industry, the river, and our community. These elements are all reflected in your new brand as we look to the future while also honoring the past. So may we present the city of Lewiston's visual identity. The new logo down there in the lower left corner, the new logo is a strong, modern symbol. The honeycomb shape references the beehive in the original city seal. The bricks play homage to our mills and the industry that the city is built on. And the keystone shape right in the middle references the architecture that's found throughout the city, as well as our central location within Maine. The oranges in your color palette are a modern take on the brick buildings that dot the Lewiston skyline, while the blue grounds the brand and references the river. Your history and your future have all influenced the design of this logo and inspired us as we've gone through the process of creating it. That being said, the new logo will mean different things to different people. What's important is that over time, the logo becomes a symbol of the city. And it's okay if its residents, business owners, or visitors don't immediately know exactly what inspired us when we were creating it. But it's important to note that any new brand will take time to resonate and to take hold with its constituents. But you, as well as the administration and management of the city, will play a significant role in helping to make this brand a success. Consistent usage of the new brand, as well as a public campaign, which we'll talk more about towards the end of the presentation, will be crucial in the overall success of this initiative. So this next screen shows multiple variations of the logo. At Warp and Weft, we believe in what's called responsive logo design, which means that a logo should be flexible and able to be used in a variety of formats and marketing channels. For that reason, we've designed the primary logo, which you see on the top left, a stacked version, which you see in the middle, and a horizontal version. So these are all intended to all equally represent the city and be used where appropriate. So we don't want you to be constrained, and we don't want your logo to be constrained by having to fit into a particular shape or size. And so that's the reason we design responsive logos. Also on this slide, you can see your entire color palette, which is at the bottom. So you'll note that there's only a couple of the colors that are used in the primary logo, but the remainder of the palette will flesh out through the rest of the brands and through a campaign, which will hopefully be the next tactic we undertake. On the right, you see, the top right, you see an icon, which is really very similar, or the same icon that's used in the logo, except it has the date 1863 in it. That is when Lewiston officially became a city. And so that icon is used and can be used throughout your brand as just a design element. It should be used in a larger format when the year is readable. So let's move on to the next screen. So in addition to the primary city logo, we recognize that there are a number of departments within the city that will need a unique identity. And for that reason, we've also designed a variation of the logo that is department-specific, but still tied to the overall brand. You see that here on the right, and you see how it could also be used on a public works vehicle. So we have developed logos for each one of the city departments, just like this public works one you see here, as well as the more specific city of Lewiston logo that you just looked at. This next slide shows the business card, which is simply an example of how the new brand will be executed on your marketing and communications materials. And this is a preview of what your Facebook page would look like with a new profile image, a new cover image. And last, but certainly not least, is your brand style guide. So a brand style guide contains everything you will need to help guide the rollout of the new brand, as well as maintain visual and verbal consistency in the long term. The brand style guide contains your verbal brand, which consists of a brand positioning statement, values, voice and tone, vocabulary, benefits and differentiators, tagline, descriptors, and an elevator pitch. And your visual brand includes your logo system and usage, icons, pattern, color palette, typography, stationery, and email signature formatting. It is important to note here that we typically include a mission and vision in key messaging, but since the city already has approved versions of these, those won't be found in the brand style guide. So we consider a brand style guide as kind of your brand bible, and it's our hope that it will be embraced internally, referenced often, and used as a guide to how the city's brand should be consistently presented, both visually and verbally. So that is your visual brand, and now we're going to jump into messaging.
Okay, key messaging. What is key messaging? Key messaging is a combination of your internal and external brand messaging. It defines and guides Lewiston's brand. Fundamentally, it's the city of Lewiston's sense of identity and shapes how Lewiston communicates to the world. Key messaging will help Lewiston better represent and communicate the city's authentic story, one that honors our heritage and captures the city's vision for the future. These messages are born from Warp and Weft's research, the focus groups, survey responses. These includes the words spoken directly from the people who live in the city and are connected to this city. In doing this, trends emerge, words and phrases are repeated, themes are made clear. Lewiston already has residents, businesses, a history, a culture, a set of values. A brand already exists. Our hard work at Warp and Weft comes in objectively identifying the differentiators and benefits and values that Lewiston has and how we can leverage those to position the city for a successful brand that remains authentic to who Lewiston is. But before we move on to view some of the messaging that we have in this presentation and an overview of what's included in the brand style guide, I want to just ask you guys a question. How many times have you heard the old saying, "You can't be everything to everyone"? You've heard it, right? This cannot ring more true than with branding. In the strategic phase of this process, Warp and Weft presented you with target audience personas that we saw earlier, solving the issue of "everyone" in the affirmation statement. Now, what needs to be kept in mind as we move forward through these messages is the "can't be everything" part. Yes, Lewiston has great architecture, eateries, natural resources, arts, culture, diversity, hospitals, businesses, higher education, the list goes on and on. But a generic appeal doesn't build a successful brand. What builds strong, effective brands is focusing on what makes Lewiston different. What makes Lewiston stand apart from our peer cities? What does Lewiston have that others do not? A brand isn't who we think we are or want to be, but who we are authentically and what Lewiston's brand promises to deliver and will be able to deliver. Here you see the differentiators that have been identified. This is what we've heard over and over again and what can be delivered on as part of Lewiston's brand promise. I'll run through these quickly. Centrally located. Well, Lewiston is located roughly one hour from the ocean, mountains where you can hike and ski, major cities, remote areas. Our location is a differentiator. Historic architecture. Can other cities claim that? Yeah, they sure can, but they don't have a basilica. They don't have the National Register of Historic Places listings, the heritage, the history that we have unique to Lewiston. Lewiston is competitive and attractive real estate market, a lower living cost compared to other major cities in Maine, a huge boon to Lewiston that we've heard repeated throughout this process. Lewiston has all possible locations to live within our city limits. There's a downtown, an urban area, suburban neighborhoods, and rural outskirts. Talk about like a broad, general appeal. There's also professional and premier medical facilities, education, and social services. Yes, we're the second-largest city in the state of Maine, but that's a lot of assets to have under one roof. We have access to natural resources and green space. Again, can other cities say this? Yes, of course they can, but not to our unique resources that we have. The canal system, Andrews Coggin River, Great Falls, Thorn Craig, hiking trails. We're also a former mill town with ample mill space just waiting, some of which has been redeveloped already and some that's being occupied by new businesses. A lot of it that's available. Lewiston has incredible industrial roots and enterprising heritage that we are proud of and revert back to. We have a rich cultural diversity, including multiple languages spoke here, beliefs, worldviews, perspectives that offers us a huge opportunity. Do other cities have diversity? Of course they do. But Lewiston is uniquely positioned as having its diversity on a very public front, and we can use that to our advantage. In mining through all this information, these answers, these perceptions, Lewiston's brand promise becomes very clear. Opportunity, possibility, potential. People keep saying Lewiston is on the verge of greatness, on the cusp of something big. There's a palpable energy here, a buzz is in the air. But how do we deliver on that brand promise? Lewiston delivers because we are affordable, we are accessible, and there is so much opportunity. The naysayers will say they're vacant storefronts. It's opportunity. Say there's empty mill space. It's opportunity. I'm going to read, these are just two of the descriptors that we've included in your complete brand style guide, which also includes a 25-word descriptor and 100-word descriptors of both of these. We have a general city descriptor, which, as it says, is a general overview used in general marketing materials or collateral. We also have an economic development descriptor used, obviously, for more economic development-focused pieces. General city descriptor, I'd like to read to you. Lewiston, Maine is a growing city full of possibility, delivering affordable, accessible, and abundant untapped opportunity. Founded on a fiercely blue-collar ethos from an industrial past that carries through the present culture, Lewiston offers all the potential of a vibrant city balanced by a strong hometown sense of community. Economic development descriptor. Lewiston, Maine is a growing city full of economic possibility, delivering affordable, accessible, and abundant untapped opportunity. Entrepreneurs, developers, and investors have access to a vibrant and diverse city where potential is visible and impact profound. Founded on reinvention and resilience, Lewiston is a transformative city with a prosperous future. In this presentation, you'll also see that the values have been included, which is also included as your key messaging in your brand style guide. What are values? Your values define what you believe and embrace as an entire city, shaping the culture of who Lewiston is and what it stands for. These are intended to go beyond city staff, beyond city councilors, for the whole city to embrace and uphold. Values are important. They act as a barometer and help define how success is achieved, implementing a new program, a new initiative. Are we living up to these values? Are we making sure that we are honoring, embracing diversity? Is the quality of life here being preserved or improved? Are we encouraging and endorsing civic engagement? There are five listed here, born out of the thousands of responses and discussions of people who live in the city and who are connected to the city. It's what's believed the city stands for and what people want for the city. A strong brand isn't built on generic appeal, saying the same thing as the competition. It's built on honest authenticity and then defining differentiators that can be delivered on as promised. A brand at its very most basic is a promise, a promise of consistency in how you present and communicate, and what can be expected of the city of Lewiston. Delivering on that is how your brand will successfully resonate in people's hearts and minds. That's what makes a strong brand. All right, brand identity. So what comes next? Amy's going to walk you through that now.
Okay, so you've seen what's been created today, and now what's next? As I mentioned earlier, the way the brand is rolled out is crucially important to its overall success. It's important that the brand is embraced internally by the city and that we all work together to push it out and put it into the hearts and minds of the city's residents, business owners, and visitors. This won't happen overnight, but with consistent and sustained usage, it will happen. So pending your approval this evening, the first stage is to launch your brand publicly by rolling it out onto your website, stationery, and for city departments to begin using it. Given the size of the city, that will take some time, and we do envision this process being a slow rollout that happens over the next few months. Beginning in the spring or summer of 2021, we recommend the rollout of a wider campaign. The campaign is intended to promote the new identity and truly celebrate all that Lewiston has to offer. We would do this with video, advertising, and a wide push on social media that will ask the public to engage in. We believe this brand is an important component in Lewiston's growth, and with sustained usage, it will help propel you forward and provide a positive identity for the city. So with that, thank you for giving us the opportunity to work on this important initiative. It's been an honor, and we look forward to the next steps. So that completes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions that you guys might have.
All right. Well, thank you. That was a great presentation. If we could drop the screen share.
Sure.
And then I'll open it up to the city council for questions or comments, because I know Zach's going to have a comment at some point during this presentation. So I'll stop it off with a question. So you had the color palette, but I'm not... So was the blue and gold the primary colors that you're suggesting? And how would the other colors come into play? I'm not sure I heard that in the presentation.
Yep, sure. So yeah, the blue and the gold are the primary color palette. Those are used in your logo and will be the predominant colors used on city stationery and signage and things like that. But as you know, what we're intending to roll out, hopefully in the spring or the summer, is a broader campaign. And so I know you guys have, we've been working on that, and you guys have had some preliminary views of that. So the broader color palette would be used in materials like that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Overall, I'm pretty excited. I think you're hitting on some really important spots, and I really can't wait to see like the next steps and the actual, what the actual marketing will look like.
Yeah.
So yeah, thank you to both of you and then everybody else at Warp and Weft for the time that you've put into this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Pettingill?
So I didn't want to disappoint with comments, but I'm over the moon excited about this. I've been sharing that in emails over the weekend. I deeply appreciate everything that you guys put into this. It's fantastic. I know it's a big change for people out there, but it's really not, because this is the heritage and the history of everything that's in Lewiston. You took what was already there and modernized it, just brought it to the forefront. So my only thing is going forward with it, helping the city with the implementation of it, so that way the rollout is as smooth as possible. But again, I love it. I can't wait to see this around the city. So kudos and thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Jolinas?
Mayor, I would really echo Counselor Pettingill. I am also over the moon, and I just want to say thank you for the work that went in. I appreciate especially, you know, as you talk about the different personas and taking perspective into play, that's a huge deal. And so I really want to say thank you for that. I mean, the amount of conversations that you had to get to this place are remarkable. And I guess my first thought when I saw this, the word that kept coming to my mind as I was listening to you roll this out was just relevance, relevance. And you know, and I recognize that there was some relevance in the older symbol, but there just seems to be in the older icon, but it just seems to be more, it's just more updated. And I guess that was the word that just came to mind for me, and I just really wanted to say great job. I'm so excited to start talking about next steps.
Us too. Thank you.
I think one thing that I want to note is I'm a firm believer that if you can get different organizations to come up with common goals, typically you can solve some really significant problems in a community. And what I see this branding doing is it's directing staff and elected officials, but also our community to kind of rally around that message so that we're not, you know, typically, you know, you talk to one staff member, oh, we're, you know, we got a lot of grit. But it's never consistent, the message that we're talking about ourselves. And I think this will really help us get in that direction.
I'm so glad you brought that up, because I think that's such an important point. Like, and that's one of the major reasons behind the brand style guide is really, you know, the last thing we want to see is that brand style guide be delivered and kind of filed and never looked at again, but using it as, you know, a training tool for new employees and really rolling it out throughout the organization. It really has the tools that the city will need to all be talking about the city, you know, in the same voice and tone and using the same words. And that just has such a significant impact on a brand, and especially when you're in the phase of rolling out a new brand. So kudos to recognizing that, and I hope that, I know Dennis is fostering that amongst the management, and that's great to see from our ends.
Although we just had a taste of what was included in the verbal aspect of the brand style guide, but there are pieces in there that you've seen that are for internal use, for you to copy and paste and use verbatim so that you're not reinventing the wheel. You don't want somebody else to control your message, to say who Lewiston is or what you stand for. You have it, and you can provide it, and we're going to start controlling that message and telling the message that deserves to be heard.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from councilors? Sophia, were you raising your hand or Counselor Collier?
No, no, but I mean, I can say something. This really looks good. Thank you so much, Molly and Amy. One thing that, you know, the 25th, I'm 25 years old. I consider myself a young person. And, you know, my generation really looks for like graphics and like pictures and visuals. So I'm thinking, have you guys considered like putting maybe like a picture in there that resembles something from Lewiston, maybe like the water, or maybe like the buildings, the brick buildings?
Just. Very much so, yes. So that's what you'll see in the campaign that hopefully rolls out in the spring. You saw a little hint of it in kind of the Facebook profile. I know I scrolled through that rather quickly, but you saw a hint of it there, and you'll see more of it in the campaign. But photography is going to be a really crucial component. But photography is going to be a really crucial component. You know, because we have beautiful architecture and we have beautiful landscape, but really what makes Lewiston Lewiston is the people. And so we want to celebrate the people, the diversity of the people, you know. And so that, we're going to do that through photography with the launch of the campaign. So we're, we're kind of in the heart of it now. We're trying to, to source out photography, get usage rights and, and select kind of the right balance of images that is representative of the city as a whole. You know, it honors its people, its architecture, its landscape, you know, all of that. So yes, we see photography as a crucial component in this campaign.
Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Put the mute button working finally. Just briefly, I'm excited to see what we've done thus far. When I started to run for office initially, one of the things that I talked to people about was changing the image of the city. And so many people thought that that needed to be done. And I, I think this is going to be an exciting way to start doing it. I hope we can carry through to fruition and, and really impact. We're looking at the old, I mean, everybody uses a city seal. They use standardized symbols here and there. You can go to just about any community and, you know, you look at the city vehicles will have a seal on the door. Some of the communities are now getting these kind of vibrant graphics. And I think it's exciting for us to be there. I look forward to seeing how we develop it further and get that image out there and do away with the, the dirty image of Lewiston's past. I think we've earned a good stat to that and I commend Warp and Left for what they've done thus far and I'm looking forward to the next chapter. I thank you.
Thank you.
And you know, to add to that, not only do we have to have the right words when selling our community, we also have to take actions within our community to, to, to live up to those words. And that happens every single day in this community and isn't recognized nearly enough. So hopefully this will be a part of that. Dennis, anything you want to add or in reference to your meeting with your management team and you roll this out to them?
Yeah, I certainly can. I mean, Molly and Amy did a, did a wonderful job this morning for our staff, for our management team. I mean, provided a, I think a more detailed presentation in terms of the style guide, I would say. And, and really as they mentioned, this is an internal, more or less an internal document for us to, to use. And so we walked through that today. I think it was a, a good discussion with staff and like all of you, they, they're getting a lot of information. I think they're absorbing it and I think we'll continue to kind of talk through that in the coming days and weeks as we, as we look internally to, to implement this. As they said, over the coming days, weeks and months as we, as we go forward. So, but it was certainly a positive interaction this morning. And I, I think I can say, you know, speak for staff and everyone, we are excited as well. I think we share in the excitement of being able to move forward with this and, and really the next steps are the, the really, the really, really fun part of being able to roll this out there and get the message out into the community. So we're looking forward to all of that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. And typically we don't take public comments during workshops, but I noticed we have like 16 attendees. I just want to give the, the folks that attended the meeting an opportunity to share their thoughts if there's anyone that would like to do that. If we could, we have one hand raised so far. If we can just bring in Linda Scott.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. This is Linda Scott. I'm at 45 Pettingill Street. I just want to say that that was a wonderful presentation. The idea that we can change our brand, put a new image out there to the whole state, to the whole country is a wonderful thing to me. So I just want to thank you. I think this is a great thing. I look forward to it being put out there. I hope that everybody can take advantage of seeing this though. And that would be the one question I would have. How are we going to get the community to see this and embrace it so that it becomes something that everybody loves and wants to do and gets excited about? Thank you.
That's a very good question, Linda. And, and part of our process in rolling that out is, you know, internal buy-in from city counselors and city staff is important in the implementation of the brand through them. But also using advocates in the community who are willing to stand up and talk and support it is going to be a huge part of our process as we roll this out. And speaking with people and business leaders and community leaders and members who can speak to the brand effectively and in public and be cheerleaders for us.
Okay, thank you, Linda. And if we could just bring in former mayor Larry Gilbert.
Hi, I'm sorry. I just missed the, the presentation, but I, I just want to thank them for the opportunity to have met with them when they were seeking community input. And just knowing Molly from years past, knowing anything she's involved with has got to be good. So anyway, so I look forward to reading the report and so on. But it's nice to see just positive effort here and the support of the council. So I want to thank all of you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Gilbert. All right. Seeing no other hands raised, I'll come back to the council. Any final thoughts, questions or comments? Counselor Pettingill?
Thank you again. And I, I wanted to mention this earlier too, but just comment on how much of perfect timing this is to be able to roll this out at this time where, you know, there's a lot of rebirth going on out there. And then when it was brought up, talking about pictures and videos and really capturing the essence of Lewiston. I, I know Warp and Left knows what they're doing, but I, I did want to point out too that not only is it important to, to capture that essence, but also that energy that we have, that's just kind of just underneath the surface that everybody's got that maybe you can't hear because you know, everything's digital and everybody's on Zoom at this time. But you can really capture that energy, you know, in a picture of, of the cityscape and of the, the people as they're out and about in their daily lives and celebrating everything. This, this is just a hundred percent the, the perfect opportunity for, for all of this. So thank you again.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Pettingill. Seeing no other questions or hands raised. Molly and Amy, thank you very much. And please pass on to everybody else at Warp and Warp and Left. How appreciative we are of the good work.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counselors. We have about 24 minutes before the seven o'clock tea time of the council meeting. So I'll see you all back here shortly.
Okay, just a reminder for everyone that we're live currently and recording. Okay, folks, good evening and like to welcome everybody to the February 16th, 2021 Lewiston City Council meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website. If by chance you you've joined this meeting using any other link, we ask that you log out and re-enter using the website I just gave. Public comment on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@lewistonmaine.gov prior to or during this meeting and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. And members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can make a comment when invited to do so by raising your hand button in the lower center of their your screen. Once they, once you are acknowledged, your microphone will be unmuted, but you'll also need to unmute it on your end as well. And councillors are asked to raise their hand to make the comment. Also, this is a reminder that this meeting is a public meeting and video should remain on at all times unless excused from the meeting. And with that said, we'll move to any city updates in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic.
All right, just have a couple of little brief things. The first is that we've come out of the split shifts that we went into when the occurrences of COVID were fairly high to protect staff and to manage our viability as a workforce. So we had split staff into two separate cohorts. I don't think I'd seen Dennis really much till from since December until beginning of December until until just today. So we're back with the low numbers. We're maintaining all of mask and hygiene protocols. So hopefully we'll manage to do that. Vaccines, the fire department has vaccinated, has had 41 of the 78 people that are eligible for vaccines, receiving vaccines. They received both doses, so that's 53% of our firefighting force at this time. Police department, 46 out of 79 or 58%. The vast majority receiving both doses is a few left that need to receive them. But that's pretty much the update for today.
All right, thank you. And Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll for attendance.
For our councillor from word one?
Yes, I'm present.
Word two?
Here.
Word three?
Present.
Word four?
Present.
Word five?
Present.
Word six?
Present.
And word seven?
Present.
Also present this evening, Mr. Mayor, is the city administrator Dennis Dotte, deputy city administrator Dale Doughty, finance director Heather Hunter, and myself as the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of January 5th and January 19th of 2021.
So moved. Second.
Moved by councillor Lejoy and who gave the second? Councillor Clements, call the roll.
And we're all roll call votes for this evening will be in with the council of word five. So it'll be councillor of word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. This will be the public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government and I only on items that are not on this agenda. And it'll be three minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in attendance in the public that has a comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and the consent agenda.
Sure, there are four items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, resolve accepting the city of Lewiston's comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2020. Number two, order taking possession of four Darcy Drive and authorizing that it be offered for sale through competitive bid process. Number three, appointment of public health committee representative to the housing committee. And number four, authorization to accept transfer of forfeiture funds.
Is there any? Yes.
I would move adoption of the consent agenda.
Okay, moved by councillor Clement.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Jolinas. And are there any items that anyone has suggested be taken off? Seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number five, please.
Item number five, public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 Lewiston Capital Improvement Program. Requested action to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and comment regarding the fiscal year 2022 Lewiston Capital Improvement Program. No action or vote is required by the city council.
All right, and with that, I'll open the public hearing and also allow finance director Hunter to give a brief presentation.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The council and the mayor were receipt of the city Lewiston annual comprehensive, or excuse me, capital improvement program. The city administrator did a presentation. The both the finance committee and the planning board have their own public hearings as well as meeting to ask questions and deliberate how their recommendation was going to go to council. The capital improvement program is a planning document used to put together what the council wants to conduct for capital projects in the upcoming fiscal year and how they wish to fund those projects. So this plan calls for about $167 million worth of projects. Bond issues scheduled are requested for the FY22, including the enterprise fund total $23,708,591.
Okay, thank you. And also noteworthy is that any item on the capital improvement plan has to go through a budget process. So the public would have the opportunity to weigh in and councillors as well at that point. With an open public hearing, I just want to turn it over to anyone in the public who may have comments or questions about our LCIP. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and call the roll, please.
Actually, we don't need a vote on the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, so we could just go to the next item if that would work for you.
That works for me. Thank you. Agenda item number six, please.
Item number six, receipt of recommendations from the finance committee and the planning board on the fiscal year 2022 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan budget. Requested action to receive and review the recommendations from the finance committee and the planning board regarding the FY22 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we'll have to bring in Director Hediger as well. But Heather, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, as I mentioned in the previous agenda item, both boards were given opportunities to ask department heads and additional questions, including the school department as well, before they drafted their recommendation to that you see before you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see Director Hediger here. I would assume Heather pretty much covered what the planning had. We had, we had several recommendations on the planning.
Right, the planning board had individual items after a thorough question and answer period, both via email to department heads as well as at the meeting in itself. And you can see as you read through their recommendations, those are items that they are suggesting council evaluate before they appropriate the final bond proceed package.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add, city administrator Dotte?
No, I believe Director Hunter's covered it and I believe you've got everything before you tonight.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask, so it doesn't sound like we have a motion on the table for this. Is this something we have to vote to accept the recommendations?
Yes, we do. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I will not be making that motion, so step down.
Okay, so we're basically just approving that we've received them?
Yes, yes, you're not really voting to accept them or adopt them. You're just acknowledging receipt of these recommendations because they are required to submit recommendations under city procedure.
Okay, so I'll entertain that motion if there's no other questions.
So moved.
Second.
It moved by councillor Khalid, seconded by councillor Lejoy. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray?
Thank you. So this has been expressed in past budget processes, but I think the inclusion of the school department request and the recommendations on that through the planning board frustrated a lot of the members of the school committee. And so it's a, it's a bit disappointing that there isn't more information weighed in on by the school committee, which now has a facility subcommittee, nope, what's it called, finance subcommittee of its own that is looking at this long-term planning in a very different way than past practice. So in past practice, it was entirely staff. And I believe the school department's contributions to the LCIP were really a moving target. They changed trying to win. They didn't feel like a long-term plan. I believe that has changed and I believe the school committee wanted me to express that feels like a missed opportunity or a missed communication that's happening around the LCIP and their contribution.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two? Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, where the actual vote will occur.
Item number seven, resolve adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan. Requested action that pursuant to Article Six, Section six oh seven D of the city charter, the city council hereby approves the resolve adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two city of Lewiston five-year capital improvement program as prepared by the city administrator.
So moved.
Okay, moved. Moved by councillor Jalinas and seconded by who? Councillor Clement. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, to the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number eight, please.
Item number eight, order authorizing the disposition of a portion of the accepted cul-de-sac of Memorial Avenue turnaround to John F. Murphy Homes Incorporated and the acquisition of property from John F. Murphy Homes Incorporated for a T-turnaround. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the disposition of a portion of the accepted cul-de-sac of Memorial Avenue turnaround to John F. Murphy Homes Incorporated and the acquisition of property from John F. Murphy Homes Incorporated for a T-turnaround.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor Lejoy. And I believe our public works director will briefly present.
Hello, everybody, and good evening. Just wanted to say that the planning and public works department worked with this developer, John F. Murphy Homes, for the extension in the very end of Memorial Avenue to extend the road at their cost and to put in a T-turnaround instead of this roundabout to meet their needs better and to, you know, for the long-term maintenance of the city. It's supported by public works and engineering as well as the developer's best end game. So what we'd like to do is recommend a portion of that accepted cul-de-sac to be transferred to John F. Murphy Homes in exchange for the property needed for the T-turnaround, as shown in the plan that Jeff had submitted with this. I think a picture says a million words. So if there's any questions around how that looks, we're just swapping some properties and both happy, you know, without a cost to anyone, there's no exchange of payment. It's an even exchange.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven? Councillor from word seven?
Looks like she might be frozen up.
Okay, we'll move on. Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And back to word seven?
I think she's still frozen up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move to a gender item number nine. And I'm assuming the public works director previous comments pertain to this as well.
Yes, it's the similar same project. Yes. Item number nine, order authorizing the discontinuance of a portion of the Memorial Ave cul-de-sac and acceptance of Memorial Ave T-turnaround as an extension of the accepted street. Requested action to approve the orders authorizing the discontinuance of a portion of the Memorial Avenue cul-de-sac and acceptance of Memorial Avenue T-turnaround as an extension of the accepted street.
So moved.
So I can.
Okay, moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Clement. Any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray?
Thank you. If this is approved, does the city need signatures of each councillor as is outlined?
We do, yes. Yes, we do, councillor Ray. Thank you. I was gonna send you an email tomorrow. We will set up a signing station in the city council chambers like we did before with hand sanitizer and new pens and everything. And then you can come in at your convenience, basically twenty-four seven to sign it as needed. Thank you.
Can I just ask, so I know we do this for election warrants, and what is the descriptor of this? Sorry, is that a weird question?
Sure. So this is the easement that we need to file at the registry. And in your packet, the very last page has the signature lines, as you noted. So it has to be filed at the registry, and then it becomes a permanent city document as evidence of the street's acceptance.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Councillor Jalinas?
I just wanted to apologize. I'm having problems with my internet. I got bumped off, but I didn't know if you read my, if you could see what I, how I voted. See?
No, but you're and you're and you're coming and going right now as well. But is that an affirmative vote in the previous motion?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you. So we just need to call the roll for this item now, right?
Yes, unless there's any additional discussion from council.
Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Sure. Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number ten, please.
Item ten, resolve transferring a port, authorizing a transfer of an amount not to exceed one hundred ten thousand, seven hundred dollars from the fiscal year two thousand nineteen bond issue to fund the emergency repairs needed on the Lincoln Street parking garage. Requested action to approve the resolve trans, authorizing a transfer of an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred dollars from the fiscal year two thousand nineteen bond issue to fund the emergency repairs on the Lincoln Street parking garages.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Clement. And I'll invite our public works director back in for brief comments. And if you have video, could we get that turned on, please?
I wasn't prepared to talk about the Lincoln Street garage, but this is this is an improvement that is a permanent improvement for this garage.
Mary Ann, let me just interrupt for a second. Do you have video or is it not available this evening?
Dennis Dale? I do not have video.
Okay, I'm sorry to go ahead.
I think Mary Ann asked me to introduce this item. This item, we had a head of, we discovered a failure of one of the corners of one of the decks based on some design changes at the Lincoln Street garage. We had a consultant review those. Those, the occurrence, there are a number of clamps that had had failed due to a joint being placed that wasn't designed that way. This was a permanent fix to re-reattach those two decks, similar to the way they were designed originally. This would be a permanent long-term fix. The garage itself was never in danger. It was just a single slab, which we supported in the meantime.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councillor Ray?
Did we use other funding to hire the initial engineering firm and to kind of shore things up until this permanent solution was found?
Heather, you could probably answer that better than I.
Yes, we did. We hired an engineering consultant to evaluate the situation and make the recommendations. We are, and now we are appropriating money to move forward with the actual implementation of the permanent repair.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Agenda item eleven, please.
Item number eleven, order authorizing the city administrator to take the necessary steps to sell the city-owned properties at Eight Anne Street, thirty-five Beechwood Avenue, seventy-one Brigham Street, One Carver Street, sixty-eight Jones Avenue, two twenty-seven Lincoln Street, and forty-seven Payne Street. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to take the necessary steps to sell the city-owned properties at Eight Anne Street, thirty-five Beechwood Avenue, seventy-one Brigham Street, One Carver Street, sixty-eight Jones Avenue, two twenty-seven Lincoln Street, and forty-seven Payne Street.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Lejoy, seconded by councillor Clement. Questions or comments from the council? We do, we are presenting on this? No? Okay. Okay, seeing none to the public? Okay, back to the council. Call the roll.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number twelve, please.
Item number twelve, order authorizing an easement for access through a strip of land along ten Nob Hill Avenue. Requested action to approve granting an easement to William J. Horn for access through a strip of land along ten Nob Hill Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor Jalinas. And I believe our public works director will be presenting. And she has video.
It took me a minute to figure that part out. Nob Hill Avenue was originally accepted as a street back in nineteen sixty-two, and then it was extended in nineteen eighty-three. When they put in the road for that second section, there was a discrepancy in how the right-of-way was laid out on the curve at property number ten Nob Hill Avenue. The discrepancy, the road was built within the right-of-way, but the right-of-way went into the private property area. So there's a fourteen or a sixteen-foot strip that needs to get corrected. And it's in the deed description that is preventing this homeowner to subdividing for another lot for another family home to be built. What we're recommending is that we provide a temporary access easement for a temporary solution so that this property owner can continue with his plans. And that as part of the fiscal year budget, we've put in to permanently get the deed research done and rewrite that description so that it's done legally as part of our operating budget for next year. So this is a temporary solution, and the budget year for next year would be the permanent solution, allowing this property owner to kind of move forward with building a new home in this area.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item thirteen, please.
Item number thirteen, resolve accepting Michael and Michelle DeWitt's donation of the property located at thirty-two Knowlton Street. Requested action to approve the resolve accepting Michael and Michelle DeWitt's donation of the property located at thirty-two Knowlton Street.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by councillor Jensen, seconded by councillor Ray. And I have Dave as presenting, but Dave's not here, so.
I'd say it's probably Doug Green is being brought in from Dale right now.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is relatively simple action. Mr. and Mrs. DeWitt have owned this property for a number of years. It's unbuildable. It's totally in the floodplain. It has no street access. So they have offered to donate it to the city in evaluating that there's a number of other properties in this area that are also owned by the city. So long-term, it has potential to become more of an open space area for some type of public enjoyment perhaps. So the planning board voted seven to nothing to recommend that the city council accept this donation.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, please.
Item number fourteen, order adopting the new city of Lewiston logo and brand style guide. Requested action to approve the order adopting the new city of Lewiston logo and brand style guide.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Pen Gill, seconded by councillor Jalinas. Questions or comments from the council? Okay, and Dennis, I see you're listed as presenting, but I think we had the presentation. You all said, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I don't think I could do a better job than what was already presented to you this evening, but that's certainly all I can add.
All right, thank you. To the public? Okay, back to the council. Call the roll, please.
Councillor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
A very enthusiastic yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item fifteen, please.
Item number fifteen, appointment to the Auburn Lewiston Airport Board of Directors. There is a suggested motion printed in your book, so the council is asked to review the application submitted, and then a motion could be made accordingly.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Clement?
Yes, I moved to appoint Mark Blaze to the Auburn Lewiston Airport Board of Directors. Said term to expire January ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, moved by councillor Clement, seconded by councillor Jensen. And I see council president Lejoy may be presenting. Do you have anything to add, council president Lejoy?
What was that again, Mr. Mayor?
Do you have anything to add on that, the airport board? You're listed as the presenter, but.
Yes, no, not really. Just the information that came on the application as well as the presentation this evening. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none to the public? Back to the council, councillor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just just trying to ensure here that, you know, as I look at the different applications and what these two candidates have to offer, both wonderful candidates for sure, but wondering if, you know, board in particular needing at this point, so just wanted to kind of throw that out. I know finance director Hunter, you've had a lot more experience on this particular board. I don't know if there's anybody, I'm just kind of curious about that.
Do you have anything you'd like to add? Director Hunter?
My only thoughts would be, we have a lot of.
Um, my only, uh, thoughts would be, we have a lot of, um, aeronautical experience currently, we have a lot of financial experience. It would be nice to branch out into somebody that had some marketing experience in order to better utilize the facilities at the airport. Um, I think that's what the airport board was looking for, and potentially a new director, um, because we also have the engineering component covered with, um, another board member as well when we're looking at capital improvements there.
Councilor Jelineus?
Thank you, and I, you know, and I am new to that. Also, Justin and I had switched out, and that was just a pretty important message that I had heard in the couple meetings that I attended, so that's why I sort of brought it up for discussion at this level. Thank you.
All right, and you're, and you're breaking up, so we only caught about half of, uh, what you said, but in the end, we did copy that, uh, you know, that's the biggest reason you brought it out, because of the conversation you had in the meeting, okay?
That's right, thank you.
All right. Uh, and I also, I, I, I had spoken with the airport director, and he also shared that, uh, he was pretty intrigued with the marketing side, that this person was the other, one of the applicants was bringing, so just for consideration of the council. Uh, Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is, question is coming from experience on another board, um, and I, I don't honestly know much about airport, uh, since Councilor Jensen and now Councilor Jelineus serve on that. Um, I'm just wondering if there is any potential for conflicts of interest, um, with someone who, uh, does, you know, work out of the Auburn hub?
Yeah, so I think, uh, uh, that was a question I had as well, and I think, uh, City Administrator Dotay looked into that.
He did. Um, I think there is some potential, um, for the candidate that you're referencing to, to have some, um, some conflict, uh, of interest, opportunity, situations, and basically the, you know, the legal opinion or advice that we got was just, they would obviously have to recuse themselves um, from those, uh, from those votes, anything that had, um, you know, had that. Um, I, I think there, the, the broad general nature of some of the votes that the, the airport board does take up, that was certainly referenced as well. I'm in our legal opinion that there could be some, um, more frequency of, of those conflicts kind of coming up, and it just requires the, uh, that person, if they are appointed, to, to really be careful in the board, to be mindful of that and recusing anytime that comes up, so.
And could I continue, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How many members serve on that board?
I'm waiting for Heather, so I can't recall.
I see her counting in her head.
I want to say it's either seven or nine.
It's nine.
Okay, thank you.
I'll bring the rookie on the board.
I just often think about, um, if someone is going to need to recuse themselves from votes going forward, um, even with nine members, um, I think about school committee, you know, one person's absent, one recusal, and then you're running into, um, some majority, and if you need a two-thirds majority to do something, issues, um. I don't feel as comfortable with the candidate who's up for appointment, um, so just wanted to express that before the vote is taken.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilor Jensen, you had your hand up earlier, you all said?
Um, yeah, I was going to provide them insight if, if anyone else, uh, I guess wasn't going to, but from everyone else, the people have said, um, I don't really have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I'm going to turn it over to the public quickly. And seeing none, bring it back to the council for any final questions or thoughts? Seeing none, call the roll.
Your counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
No.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
No.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of four to three.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen, receipt of recommendations from the mayoral ad hoc committee on equity and diversity. Requested action to receive the recommendations from the mayoral ad hoc committee on equity and diversity.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Jelineus, and I believe City Administrator Dotay will briefly, uh, present.
Evening, Mayor and Councillors. Um, back in July of two thousand twenty, uh, the mayor established an ad hoc committee on equity and diversity. Um, following that for several months, the, uh, committee, uh, made up, uh, Councilor Jelineus, Council, uh, Council Jensen, and Councilor Khalid all also on this committee. Um, over the next several months, they worked, uh, through review of all policies and procedures, uh, particularly in our police department, but also citywide, and developed a host of recommendations, um, that were delivered to you on January twenty-sixth of this year, two thousand twenty-one. Um, just this action tonight is just to receive those recommendations. Um, important to note, there were some recommendations, uh, that did have a budget impact, and those items would be taken up through the budget process, our normal budget process. So tonight is just a simple receipt of the recommendations with no, um, other impacts involved.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Clement?
I'm to understand we're going to vote only on receiving the recommendations, no approval of any of the recommendations, and certainly we can't go into anything budgetary at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I will reserve a multitude of comments that I have for that process, but open it up to the others, I yield at this time.
Thank you, Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, again, publicly thank those who participated in this process, um, and the steps forward that I will introduce. Um, I do think there was one portion of the, um, original order establishing the committee that I feel could continue to be improved, and this is a, a drum that I've been banging on for the past four years now as a councillor, that we can always increase our transparency with our policies and procedures, and I think it was, um, kind of targeted at the Lewiston Police Department when we talked about this initially with the ad hoc committee, um, so I, I, I will say, I think, you know, getting those policies and procedures um, readily available for us who have constituents who reach out, um, sometimes with complaints or concerns, and us knowing immediately who to go to, I always go to the chief, and he is incredibly responsive, um, and responsible, um, when we have conversations about that, so I do thank him for his work and his efforts. Um, but I do think it could be slightly more transparent, as all levels of government can always be more transparent.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll, please.
Counselor from word five?
Councilor Clement?
Yes, just one thing if I might, uh, I appreciate the work that the committee has done. I will receive their recommendations. However, the inclusion of a new position in the budget, we're going to have a discussion about that in the future, I'm sure. I will vote to accept the recommendation, but it's with a heavy heart that I do it, because of some of the recommendations and the nature in which they were made and brought up. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
A reluctant yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, agenda item seventeen, reports and updates. Any reports or updates? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen, any of, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
That's okay.
Go ahead and announce the, announce the item.
Uh, we have, we have a hand, uh, another hand raised, so go ahead, Councilor Clement, do you have something?
Yes, I wish to, uh, move to suspend the rules for one quick item.
Okay, hold, yeah, so hold on one sec, Councilor Ray, did you have something? Your hand was.
I was also ahead of the clerk, so, um, I think, uh, the councillor from word six's motion stands before mine.
Okay, so you know, it's really easy to confuse me, so you gotta be careful, thank you. All right, so Madam Clerk, uh, agenda item eighteen.
Sure, item number eighteen, any other business councillors or others may have relating to Lewiston City Government?
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I did want to ask, um, city staff about, um, now that the main state legislature, um, seems to have developed a system for meeting in the COVID-nineteen emergency and the pandemic, um, it sounds like committees are holding, um, hearings on bills and things are being referred to committee, and so I wanted to ask, um, if it were, would be possible for relevant um, things that have to do with city government, uh, might be referred to us so that we might join you in submitting testimony. I know two years ago, I provided testimony on revenue sharing, um, to the Taxation and Appropriations Committee through, um, approval of the city council, and I think that was great to show that Lewiston City Council wanted the state to share a bit more revenue. Um, I'm providing some testimony tomorrow just as myself, but it would be really great to know, um, what is up for discussion at the legislative level and how we could support you and the city through that.
All right, thank you, and I saw both, uh, City Administrator Dotay and, uh, Deputy City Administrator nodding their heads, so we'll get something else. Uh, Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to move for suspension of the rules. They have one item to bring up under suspension, fairly quick item. If that motion is in order.
Second the motion.
Okay, moved by Councilor Clement to suspend the rules, uh, and seconded by Councilor LaJoy. And, so.
We, we need an affirmative vote first.
Yeah, Kathy, can you walk us through this, please?
Sure, sure. So, uh, the motion would be to suspend the rules to then bring up an item, so the first vote would be to suspend the rules, so I'm happy to call the roll for that.
And are there any comments or questions to that item first?
Do you like an explanation of the item first, or?
Yeah, I, I think that would be good.
I, I bring this up after a call from a constituent last Friday. Uh, the owner-operator of Dave's Auto World on Outer Lisbon Street is in the process of selling the business after thirty-two years in the business. He did fall behind on taxes for a period of time. The city did take title to some of the land. He has since paid everything. He's paid in full through the end of this tax year, from my understanding, he's paid it up through to April. Uh, he has a buyer, was hoping to close last Friday, but there was a, a minor glitch, uh, in understanding that, uh, he didn't pay until Thursday. Our docket or our agenda is prepared and submitted Wednesdays, so he was going to be out into March for one of our March meetings in order to get approval on a quitclaim deed, return title. Uh, that's why I bring it up tonight. He would like very much, he's got an anxious buyer. Uh, he doesn't want to lose his buyer, um. Yeah, he's been in the business there for thirty-two years, he tells me, and he's really looking forward to entire retirement, although with some trepidation. Uh, he's not sure what he's going to do. He said, I've been doing this for six days a week for thirty-two years, I don't know what I'm going to do, but I want to get out while I'm not thinking too heavily about it, so. If we could do that to accommodate him, I think it'd be a wonderful thing, and that's why I bring it up.
Okay, thank you, and Director Hunter, are all fees and taxes all in good shape now?
Yes, they were all paid Thursday afternoon.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the table to suspend the rules so that we could take another motion to address this. Uh, any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, I'll entertain, uh, motion in reference to the suspension of the rules.
Okay, we've voted to suspend the rules, I believe, and now you'd like a motion to, uh, have the council approve the issuance of the quitclaim deed.
Yeah, let me just check with the clerk, is there any specific wording that we should have on this, either the clerk or Finance Director Hunter?
I can help you out with that if you want.
Yeah.
The city council is most wishing to release or approving a release of the quitclaim deed um, located at eighteen seventy-six Lisbon Street to J.D. and Associates, parcel number zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-nine-zero-four-zero, tax map sixty-nine, lot forty-six, um, for a series of tax liens that were issued from June thirteenth, twenty-twelve, through June twenty-third, twenty-fifteen, totaling twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and six cents. Um, all of them have been, all of the amounts have been paid in full, and you are voting to release the property back to the owner.
Okay, I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Clement, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just would ask in the future if there's situations like this, I get, like, trying to help a constituent, and I think, you know, it's the right thing to do to move forward with this. Um, but if councillors have information that they plan to bring forward in such a manner, um, just a courtesy email to the council, so, so we know what we're getting into and can ask questions ahead of time would be really helpful for at least me, um, and I know some other folks process a little differently too, so, um, I think that would be really helpful. Um, thank you, Director Hunter, for having that information right at hand, that's super helpful, uh, for me to be able to make a decision.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, like, I'll be flat-out honest, I'm kind of nervous right now. I just don't have any background information on this, nothing's been brought to my attention before. Um, being expected to vote on it, like, you know, just ten minutes after kind of being introduced to this. Um, I'm nervous, so, um, I'm not quite sure exactly how I'm going to vote. Normally, we have a few more days to prepare, so I don't want to kind of open a floodgate of this becoming like a, an every-meeting thing where instead of waiting till the next meeting, we just kind of tag things on at the end by, by emergency. Um, I get that it saves time. Personally, I'd rather take some time next Tuesday out of my week to, to do an emergency meeting. Um, I don't know if we're meeting next week or not, but, um, if we're not, then to have an emergency meeting and just literally cover this one topic, to me, I'd rather do that, because I'd be more comfortable with it. Um, I'm not saying if I had all the information, I wouldn't be, you know, for sure there, but I just don't like the idea of being presented something at the last minute. And I was saying, Councilor Clement's wrong for bringing it up, just, I, I worry that we're going to start doing this a lot more often. Um, it's just not great policy. Um, this is a particular case based on the information they have. If people would rather just take care of this tonight than do like an emergency meeting next week or something, then I mean, I, I guess I could, I could push myself to vote, but, um, I honestly, I'd rather abstain from this.
So, so thank you for sharing your thoughts. I think this is the very first time, uh, this council has suspended the rules. I might, I might be mistaken, so I don't anticipate this is going to be a regular thing. This, this situation, two things. Uh, it did come up last minute for the councillor, and I think he tried to figure out the best way he could serve, but I'll let him speak to that, but, uh, this is pretty, I mean, we do these all the time, they're pretty basic, and I think having the assurance of the Finance Director that all fees have been paid, uh, hopefully that will relieve any stress that you have with this, uh, at, at this point. Councilor Jensen?
In that case, can we make it a policy to have maybe staff, like, make a list of things that could go as an emergency item, then ask us to maybe if we want to add those at the end, that way they wouldn't have to be pushed until the next meeting? We could save our residents some time. If we're going to make it a policy, then we should, I, I guess, you know, I guess something like that. That, that would be working better for our residents, I think. Does that make sense?
I know, I guess I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, but maybe Dennis caught it.
Uh, I, I guess like from now on, at the end of meetings, if there's anything that staff's waiting on for us to approve that has to be done at a meeting, like, I think of the school board approving, like, staff hires, you know, sometimes staff have to wait, like, weeks just for the school board to meet. Um, so like, there would be staff hires for us, um, the quitclaim deeds approval, so, um, instead of waiting until the next meeting, as Dave in this case would have had to do, staff can now on just maybe come to us at the end of meetings, even if it's passed, when the agenda's set, and let us know these are items that in the future will need to be approved. Are you interested in doing them now as an emergency? I think most cases, if they're like this, then we probably would be supportive, and then maybe getting into that habit, we would, I'd get more comfortable, um, being, you know, approving these, it probably is not a big deal. And then maybe getting into that habit, we would, I'd get more comfortable being, you know, approving these. It probably is not a big deal. I'm probably overthinking it. I'm ninety-nine percent sure I am. I'm just elected to do this and I have a sworn duty and I need to make sure I have all the information I need. So going forward, I'm okay doing this if we kind of make a, you know, I guess becomes a pattern, I can be more comfortable with it. And it may be even better for our residents to not have to wait as long.
All right. Yeah, so thank you for sharing that. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my two colleagues from words three and five, my apologies. I found out about this at the last minute on Friday. I attempted to resolve the issue on Friday. We weren't able to do it. We couldn't get all the players lined up in order on Friday. Monday was a holiday. Today was the storm. I myself found out that we could accomplish this. I believe it was five oh seven this evening. It is my understanding that suspension of the rules and anybody ruled by Roberts' rules is for this type of exigent circumstance. And I don't recall that we've ever suspended rules in this body before. I thought this was an exigent circumstance. The gentleman could stand to lose his buyer if he's unable to close. The guy's already been put off for what he thinks is a week. If he's put off until sometime in March, he may very well lose his buyer. I would hate to see that happen. I'm sorry that this has created stress for other members of the council, but to me, it seems to be a very simple matter of accommodating something we would do in, in March and probably nobody would question. But because the, the stars did not fall right for this gentleman, we're attempting to, to make it happen for him. And I would hope that this would allay any fears. It is not my intent to do something like this all the time. I know that certain other bodies in the city suspend the rules frequently. I don't believe in that. I didn't do this lightly. I think we have a valid reason for it, and for that reason, I brought it up. And I believe that there is support on the council to, to assist this gentleman. Counselor LaJoy and I have conferred on this back and forth since last Friday. He may have gotten a call from this gentleman as well. I don't know. I did meet with him in person on Friday. You know, I, I think the guy is trying hard to do things the right way, and I would just hate to see us further the circumstances for him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I just want to reflect, I think you'll note that this has hit a nerve for certain members of this council who have maybe served on previous bodies where things would come forward last minute and without a clear recommendation from staff in the written format that we normally get it. It normally says the city administrator approves of this action or we get a presentation from that person. And so hearing from Director Hunter about the situation has assuaged my feelings about it. I think it's great that Counselor Clement and Counselor LaJoy were in concert on this. It would just, just some heads up would be helpful, I think, is all that we're asking for. And also, this council has suspended the rules once before in July of twenty twenty.
All right. Well, we don't do it very often. Okay, all of those are good points and I, and I will share that it was brought to my attention like, I don't know, early afternoon, and I probably should have sent a quick email to the council. I just, I honestly didn't even think it would be an issue, so I'll, I'll make sure that I stay on top of that next time and you'll at least get a count, an email from me, so I'll, I'll accept the responsibility for this because I really should have said that, so thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from the council? To the public? Yeah, back to the council, Counselor Clement?
Yes, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, when I found out about this tonight, I had two choices. I could have sat down, fired up a computer and probably put out and emailed everybody, but I got a call from my A unit saying supper was ready. And I knew that that call was going to last for only a few minutes, so I rushed upstairs to grab supper. I'm at fault for doing that. I apologize to the council again. But once again, I thought that this would be something we routinely do and it wouldn't ruffle too many feathers. I see that that may not be the case. It won't happen again for my court. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that said, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. So, City Administrative Dotay, we have three executive sessions, so we'll be voting to go into one of them, but we're not expecting any votes after any of the executive sessions, correct?
That's correct. No votes after any of the executive sessions.
Right. And I more just want the public to know that so that they don't hang around to watch us just come out of of the executive session, so with that said, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss real estate negotiations of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city. Word one?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor LaJoy. Call the roll.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. So are we going to leave this site open because are we gonna do, should we try to give into motions for all three right now?
I guess I would look to the clerk for a little guidance here. Are you asking, you want to take all three executive session motions now to?
Well, just, I mean, technically, we should come in and out every single time. So we'll have to leave this, this meeting open if we're gonna do that. I guess, I guess I need guidance on how we want to handle that.
So clerk, Monte, do you have any advice on or any guidance on how they could take this up that way?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, you have a good point about not wanting to leave the public sort of hanging. You've already announced that there are no votes that are planned for the public, for the executive sessions after the executive sessions. So you could, I guess, do motions for the next two and just notate that at the conclusion of executive session number one, we will then be starting executive session number two and then number three, so it's just clear that you're going in order as on the agenda.
Okay, so so that's probably what we should do. So what's, I'll entertain a motion for the second executive session as well to discuss the disposition of property of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Okay, moved by, yes, go ahead, Counselor Clement.
A point of order on this. Could we not make a, an omnibus motion citing all three and move along that way rather than go through three separate motions and vote on them?
Actually, actually, Counselor Clement, that isn't permitted under main state law because some counselors may, for some reason, choose to vote against a particular motion to go into executive session. So because they're all three separate topics, they do need to be taken separately to protect a counselor's right to vote against it, should they so choose.
Leave the state for twenty-five years and see what happens, you know.
All right, so the second one was moved by Counselor Jalinas.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jensen. Call the roll.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. And the final one is an executive session pursuant to MRS A Title One, Section four oh five six C to discuss an economic development issue of which a premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Clement. Call the roll.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
And word four?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And does anyone need a quick break before we go into executive sessions? I've got some nod, so let's take five minutes and then we'll meet in the executive session.